There we go. I'll, I will now call the regular planning commission meeting of Tuesday, August 19th, 2025 to order, and I'll ask the clerk to please take the roll.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners, Chair Lightfoot.
President.
Vice Chair Wilkerson.
President.
Commissioner Vargas. Commissioner Banta. Commissioner Beaumont. Commissioner Dingman.
Here.
Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much. I'll ask everyone, please stand for the pledge allegiance, and I'll ask Commissioner Banta to please.
I have allegiance to the fact of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Banta. So we will now move on with regular business, starting with communication. At this time, I'll ask Director Morse if there's any communications or announcements for this evening's meeting.
Thank you, Chair Lightfoot. We have no supplemental communications or announcements.
Thank you very much. So next, we'll move on to item number four, the approval of this evening's agenda. Do I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda?
I'll move.
I've got a motion from Commissioner Beaumont and a second from Commissioner Banta. Could I please have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Banta. Commissioner Beaumont.
Yes.
Commissioner Dingman.
Yes.
Vice Chair Wilkerson. Chair Lightfoot.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. So next, next item is number five, business from the floor. This portion of the agenda is available for the public to address the planning commission on any, any item that's not on the agenda this evening. There'll be a limit of three minutes per speaker, and I welcome anybody who wishes to address the commission regarding a topic that's not on the agenda to please approach the podium. They're gonna turn that on. Here we go.
Thank you. Yes. Hello, Commissioners. I'm Joan Marquand-Wilsey, and I've lived in Vacaville for like 18 years or so. I wanted to just ask some questions about development in Vacaville, very general things. And what I'm about to say, probably these are not new questions or ideas, but I'd just like to bring them up, make sure they are continually brought up in front of you and other decisive bodies in the city. Pardon me. So the Vacaville city staff and city leaders, house builders, residents, we all ask how we can provide affordable housing. And often it's very personal, like where will my kids live? Or another target group is employees, not the executive types coming in for the new businesses, but the regular employees that work in labs and other aspects of things like we're trying to track, like the biotech businesses. I'd like to know if housing mixed with commercial properties is possible in Vacaville, if it's being considered. Is the community development department talking with architects and developers who offer projects, maybe where there's an upper story built above a store? I know that we have a lot of, I think, opportunities for that in Vacaville if we could pursue it. Also, can the city support more Habitat for Humanity builds? There have been three in Solano County, two for veterans, one in Dixon, one in Rio Vista, and there's been a project in Fairfield. And I know there's one planned for Vacaville. So the combination of funding that Habitat uses through grants and personal sweat equity for the people that live in the houses eventually is a model that perhaps we could use more of. And they're small projects, but maybe if the city could support in the way of grants or other funding, they could be enlarged. We could have some opportunities there for people to help get their own houses built. The traditional models of houses may no longer be appropriate in these times of hot, high costs to build. Are we thinking creatively about housing solutions? Thanks for listening.
Thank you very much. So I'll close business. Oh. Yes, sir.
Tom Filippi, Filippi Engineering, here for two reasons. As of September 22nd, 2025, I'm going to be retiring. Most of you don't know me, and I have some friends here on the planning commission, and I've had my business here in Vacaville just down the street for 42 years, and I've been doing land development projects. And I absolutely adore what this young woman said over here. I would be happy to talk to you about Habitat for Humanity because I am doing the engineering for the 10 lot subdivision on right around Jiffy Lube, and I'd love to tell you about development in Vacaville. I've been doing things here for 46 years, and I just wanted to make that announcement. Matt Ellis, who's one of my engineers, is going to be addressing the council on my matters tonight, but I just wanted to say goodbye. This is my last planning commission meeting, and it's been a lot of fun and a great ride. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have anybody else that addresses commission? Okay. I'll close business from the floor. And next, we'll move on to the consent calendar. So it's now time to, for the consent calendar, we'll have one item on consent, which is the minutes from the July 15th, 2025 meeting. Does anyone from the commission or the public wish to pull the consent item for discussion? Seeing none, can I please have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar? I have a motion from Commissioner Banta and a second from Commissioner Beaumont. Can I please have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Banta. Commissioner Beaumont. Commissioner Dingman.
Yes.
Vice Chair Wilkerson. Chair Lightfoot.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. So next, we'll move on to item number seven. This is the public hearing for this evening, which is to receive a presentation on McMurtry Creek Estate subdivision. We'll first hear a presentation by staff, followed by commissioning questions, and then we'll open up to the public for comment. May we please have the staff's presentation?
Good evening, Chair. Members of the planning commission, this is Albert Enaltz with Community Development Department, here to present to you tonight the McMurtry Creek Estates subdivision. Specifically, this is a request to annex 15.73 acres of unincorporated Solano County land located north of Preserve Lane and McMurtry Lane into the city of Vacaville for the purpose of creating 20 lots for single-family residential development. This project includes an environmental assessment, which is the certification of an environmental impact report, a general plan amendment, annexation, pre-zoning, tentative subdivision map, and a planned development overlay. The map on the left-hand side shows the project site in the northwest corner of the city. There are two lines of importance associated with this map. The orange line is the city limit line, and the pink line is the sphere of influence. As you can see on the map on the right-hand side, the subject site is comprised of approximately 33 acres, and they're looking at subdividing this site to bring parcel A into the city's limits. And you can see that orange line meandering around the right-hand side of that parcel A. Parcel B would continue to reside within unincorporated Solano County, and you can see there's a pink line there, and then just underneath that pink line is a green dashline, which is the city's urban growth boundary, the outermost extent of the city's growth until 2028. And so the, this particular project site is located within our sphere of influence, which means at some point in the future, we had anticipated that development would occur around this area. Some relevant background for the commission for tonight's public hearing is that this whole thing started in 2019 when the city council initiated a general plan amendment. It started with a formal application that was filed in 2021, and city staff worked with the applicant to refine the tentative map in the application exhibits. We held a scoping meeting for the draft environmental impact report, which means things that we needed to include in that environmental analysis. And then we held another neighborhood meeting because that was another component that we needed to hear back was the neighborhood's comments about the particular proposal. There's a big chunk of time in between 2023 that we were processing a development project and holding a public review for a draft environmental impact report. But we held in 2025 a public hearing to consider that draft EIR, which I'll cover a little bit more in my presentation. This map shows the location of the proposed improvements that would be done with the tentative map. You'll see that remainder parcel B on the left-hand side that would stay in unincorporated Solano County, and then the realignment of the city limits on the westernmost extent of that portion with a future annexation application with Solano-Lafco. This is intended to identify exactly how they're going to get access to this project site, would be through an extension on Preserve Lane that would go northerly to provide an additional street. And then you'll see on the eastern side of the project site is a separate fire lane that would provide emergency access to the existing fire lane that's surrounding Cheyenne, which dumps into Whitestone Court. An additional access point would be provided over by McMurtry Lane, which is located just west of Preserve Lane, and it's located right there on McMurtry Lane, right there. So that would remain as an emergency vehicle access point. So this project, it's a, it's a very sizable project because it involves a variety of different land use entitlements as well as an environmental assessment in order to be able to evaluate the impacts associated with the project and what changes have to be done. I mentioned it includes a general plan amendment, annexation, pre-zoning, tentative subdivision map, and a planned development. But what does all that mean? Well, they're looking at changing our general plan, which is designated right now as hillside agriculture to residential estates. The annexation would be for that 15.73 acres to bring that into our city limits. The pre-zone would apply zoning now in time through an ordinance that, at the time when the project does get annexed in at the city, that there is zoning that would be applied to the project, and the proposed zoning that's being requested is RE 12, which means that the lot sizes have to be a minimum 12,000 square feet in size. The tentative map is for subdividing that 15.73 acres to create 20 lots, as well as fire lane access routes and some setback landscaping that's necessary because of its location in a hillside area. The planned development's also necessary in order to be able to build in an area that's geologically unstable. We do, as part of the environmental assessment, have a geotechnical report that shows how the engineer will need to perform the improvements across the project site to make it safe. And then something else notable about this particular project is that the fire lane areas, as well as these setback landscaping surrounding the project, would be maintained by a homeowners association as in addition to water detention basins. This exhibit shows that general plan amendment where the area is identified as hillside agriculture, and they're going to be looking at changing it to residential estates. And here is the proposed zoning. There's no zoning now because it's not in our city limits. So should it be annexed into our city limits, RE 12 would be applied to that 15.73 acre site. So when, when the city receives applications like this, our job is to determine whether or not the proposal is going to be compliant with a variety of different regulatory documents. And so it starts with our general plan. They're proposing to amend the general plan map to change that. We reviewed their proposal and found that the proposed lot size is location of where it would be at, complies with the applicable general plan policies. The annexation request, it's, we, we, the evaluation for that component is whether or not existing city services could be available to serve those future residents. Preserve Lane is right there, and the water, sewer, street, and public access could be extended into that area. So that evaluation was confirmed by a variety of different departments within the city that the city could at some point in the future serve on that project site. We should note that that annexation application would be subject to a separate subsequent application submitted to Solano-Lafco. And as part of that application, the city would have to establish a tax share agreement as well as prepare a comprehensive update to the city's municipal service review before the annexation can be submitted. Once an application is submitted to Solano-Lafco, we don't know what the timing would be. It would be subject to their timing and how they process those applications. And right now, we don't have a timeline for when we would engage on the negotiations for a tax share agreement. Solano County hasn't notified any of the cities within the county about when that would occur. The pre-zoning I mentioned, it would be added for residential states, 12,000 square foot lots, once the property is annexed in. We do have existing development standards within our municipal code that would be applicable to that upon a future development, and we confirmed through the tentative map that the proposal would comply with those existing development standards. Tendative subdivision map is required. It would be effective once annexation is complete. They're looking at creating 20 lots. It would be for future custom home development, and then the HOA I mentioned would be responsible for maintaining the setback landscaping surrounding the project, as well as the emergency vehicle access roads. Plan development's required due to, because there's a small portion of the project site that's within a hillside area, and so the project's going to be required to implement those recommendations for improvements that are required in the geotechnical report. All in all, we looked at all the entitlements and concluded that it does comply with the general plan and policies, as well as the land use and development code, and it meets the required findings. The second component of this is the environmental impact that it poses on, that the project poses on the environment. Environmental analysis is required and by the California Environmental Quality Act, and the purpose of this environmental review is to disclose impacts, identify whether or not there's alternatives, and to avoid those impacts and maybe even mitigate those impacts to less insignificant level. In this particular instance, the city determined that an environmental impact report was needed for one particular aspect related to transportation and traffic. Specifically, this area of land was never identified for development within our general plan. It's hillside agriculture, so that adds vehicle miles traveled to our city, and that represents a significant impact for traffic. And there's no feasible mitigation measures, and so in that particular instance, you have to disclose that to the public that it's a significant impact, there's no way to avoid it. And so we did that. We published a draft environmental impact report for 45 days, ending on April 21st, and received public comments from a variety of different agencies, as well as the public. Then we published a final environmental impact report to address those comments. There weren't any major comments to the draft environmental impact report, so we didn't need to recirculate that document. Ultimately, we found that there are findings that could be made, and that there is a statement of a variety of consideration that could be made that warrants that this project provides executive housing and that it supports the city's economic development strategy. For those reasons, that, that this project is, the overriding benefits of this project outweigh the impacts created by the vehicle miles traveled. This project had to go before the Solano County Airport Land Use Commission for review because it's located within Zone E of the Travis River Force Base compatibility plan. We took that to the airport land use commission on April 10th, and they found it consistent with that compatibility plan. Along the process, we conducted public outreach, starting in September 2022, where we sent out a new project notice to residents located within 600-foot radius. We held a scoping meeting in June of 2023, as well as another, a neighborhood meeting in July of 2023. And we held a planning commission meeting on the draft environmental impact report earlier this year, and then we also sent out public notice for this hearing. What we heard from residents were that many people were concerned about traffic noise from construction activities, whether or not the project could be served by water, the type of grading weather would create an issue within the hillside area, and then there was concern about loss of green space and wildlife. There was concern about the lots also being too small. What we evaluated in the, in these comments, we tried to address within the environmental impact report as well in the staff report. With regards to traffic, what we found was, I think that there was only 20 a.m. and 20 p.m. peak hour trips being added. We found that noise would be mitigated through existing conditions of approval where they wouldn't be able to conduct construction activities beyond a certain point. They wouldn't be able to go before, earlier than 7 a.m., no later than, I think, 7 p.m. Water can be able to be served by the sides. We were able to confirm that with our utilities department, as well as sewer and storm drain, as well as vehicle access to the project site. But that leads us to the conclusion I want to share with the commission, which is ultimately staff does support this proposed project. We found that the environmental impacts can be mitigated to a less significant impact, with the exception of the VMT. We understand that VMT, those are significant impacts, but they can be overridden due to other considerations. We found that the project could be served by existing improvements near the project site, and that meets the required findings for approval. It's consistent with the general plan, zoning, as well as state law, and would comply with those existing development standards at a future point when it does get built. So with that, our recommendation for the commission is that you would recommend to the city council approval of the project. That concludes my presentation. The applicant's engineer is also here to answer any questions, and the city's consultant with LSA is available to help elaborate on any questions related to the environmental impact report.
Great. Thank you very much. Do we have any commissioner questions? We'll start with Commissioner Beaumont.
Thanks, Albert. Appreciate it. The HOA is strictly for the 20 homes that are being built. Is that correct?
Correct.
And the MSR hasn't been updated yet, I assume?
We're in the process of that right now.
Okay. And I think you tried to explain it to me, and I read it in the report, that 20 homes is going to cause significant and unavoidable impact to traffic. The, the percentage of base year traffic is .00037, and that's significant and unavoidable.
That's correct. Yeah. And it is a small amount, and it is just 20 lots that are adding 20 hours, like during the peak hour, when people are moving, coming and going from their homes, you could expect to see 20 trips per hour in the a.m. and then 20 trips per hour in the p.m. But the vehicle miles traveled thing is that because the project site was identified as hillside agriculture, we never anticipated that there was going to be single-family homes built there. And so when we did a supplemental environmental impact report in 2021, we said, we understand our general plan creates vehicle miles traveled. Fortunately, at this time, this project wasn't identified as residential estate, so the idea is that it adds a brand-new vehicle miles traveled to that analysis, and that's the component that we have to disclose to the public. It's just brand-new, it's being added, but the commission can make that finding that the benefits of the executive housing, as well as the goals that the city is trying to achieve, outweighs that potential significant impact.
So basically, unless your car, don't own a car and live next to a transportation center and you're outside the city, it would always have that significant impact?
Correct.
Okay. The ingress and egress for this is off McMurtry, is that right, for all construction and everything else?
Correct, yeah. Construction will be off of McMurtry.
Okay. And that's going to be improved, or is it going to be like it is? I went up there and looked and...
I would rely upon the applicant to elaborate a little bit more about how they intend to get construction activity to that location.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Beaumont. Commissioner Wilkerson.
Thank you for the presentation. Albert, can you pull up the map? Or the slide of the, one of them? Yeah, thank you. Is, was there any thought to having two ways in through McMurtry and another road? Just because I'm thinking about lots five and six, and if there was an emergency, you know, they're, they're pretty back, they're pretty far, and there's really only one way out, or could they use the city fire access road?
Yes, they could use the city fire access road, they could use McMurtry Lane. We looked at the prospects of widening McMurtry Lane, but because of its proximity to the hillside, they would have to cut into the hillside, build a very large retaining wall, which applicant can elaborate about a little bit about how that was going to create too much of a cost burden for the project.
Okay. And since these are all custom lots, and maybe the applicant can, would construction be at different times? Because are they going to sell them all at once, or is it going to be? Think you know where I'm going.
I would let the applicant.
Okay.
Answer that question.
And then lastly, is there a need for this type of housing in Vacaville?
Yes, there is.
Okay. Thank, thank you. The applicant can answer those other questions for me. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilkerson, or Vice Chair Wilkerson. Commissioner Banta.
Thank you for the presentation.
I got you.
All right. Thank you for the presentation. What other areas or neighborhoods in the city of Vacaville have the residential estate land use designation, as well as the RE 12 zoning designation? And what are the surrounding neighborhoods' land use designations, as well as zoning designation?
So for this one, I would illustrate on the map of the existing general plan versus the proposed. The surrounding area located in Cheyenne, as well as Preserve Lane and Bentree Lane, all of those areas are designated residential estates. So they meet an area directly next to this project. Other areas, I took a quick cursory look. There are other rural properties that are located along Browns Valley Road that, rural properties, but they're also residential estates. For zoning, the comparative zoning next to the sites has a variety of residential estates, 20 one-acre lots. I realize there is a textual issue with the map down below, says RE 1, it's actually RE 12 along Preserve Lane, right down there at the bottom. Let me see if I can put it up on the map for you, right there. So that's actually, it should say RE 12, so I apologize for that. But that is the adjoining zoning, so the proposed zoning would be, proposed general plan and proposed zoning would be consistent with the neighborhood next to it.
Awesome. And then, kind of similar to Vice Chair Wilkerson's question, how could increased executive housing impact or attracting businesses to our city to impact economic development?
That's a very big question. So the main attractor for the city of being able to help improve on a variety of different things is getting high-paying jobs. And you get high-paying jobs for attracting businesses, biomanufacturing, industrial type of businesses, research and development. But a lot of those are run by CEOs and executives, and they need a place to live. And so what this does, it fills that unmet need of the executive-style housing for people that were looking to establish their company maybe in the city of Vacaville, they have a place to maybe build their custom home.
Thank you. And then the proposed timeline says that this needs to send an application to Lafco in the summer of 2026, I think it said in the report. What does that timeline look like, timeline look like for the Lafco approval, as well as for that master tax transfer agreement approval?
Well, we're actively working with Solano-Lafco right now on the MSR update. It's necessary in order to be able to get the annexation to be considered, but once that's complete and we submit that application with Lafco, it's really in their hands. They're in charge of the processing timeline for that one, so I wouldn't be able to answer on that.
Okay. And then this development proposed to have specific housing plans, or are they all custom-built? You may have already answered that.
It'd be custom-built.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Banta. Commissioner Dingman, do you have any questions?
Hey, thanks, Chair. Appreciate that, and Albert, great presentation. Really good questions that have already come up, had answered two of mine already. I do have a question just in general on future annexations, and could you tell me, Albert, or big picture, anybody that's out there, with approving this project, that expectations for more annexations, whether it's in northern Vacaville or McMurtry Lane or northward? And being a new commissioner, just how, how should we evaluate these cumulative impacts? So this is executive housing, I understand that it's only 20, 20 units, you know, for, for the 15 acres that's there, but could you just talk a little bit about that for me, please?
Yes, the, the annexation of the, well, the approval of this project doesn't create a surge of annexations around the city. This is a, located in an area that's in the northwest corner of the project site, it's the very extent of our city limits. And on, on the map shown on the screen, that shows a location of where our urban growth boundary is, and so there's not much more growth that could be done beyond that location. So, so there's that. For, for the cumulative impacts, I, I might rely on the city's consultant to maybe elaborate more technical expertise on that one, but the overall addition of these lots can be served by those existing infrastructure improvements on the site. As I mentioned earlier, the most notable and visible type of impact that you might see is the additional vehicles that are traveling along the roadways. And what we identified as part of the potential impact created is that you would see noticeable 20 a.m. and 20 p.m. peak hour trips, those are vehicles moving back and forth. But the, the overall cumulative impacts is that, what we found is that it's not going to result in a significant impact that our existing roadway. It's a small project in our existing roadways, our existing water, sewer. It's a small project in our existing roadways, our existing water sewer and infrastructure can't accept this type of a project.
Copy. Thank you very much. No other questions.
Thank you very much. Can I bring up the applicant to discuss some of the questions that were brought up?
My name is Macalister. Filipe Engineering, and we are representing the project tonight. First of all, I'd like to thank staff on a wonderful presentation and working with us on putting together a great project and the condition of approval and the EIR. I believe your question first was about McMurtry Lane and improvements. There are no major improvements planned. That will be the primary ingress egress for construction. Obviously, during construction, things get worn out and things, so they may have to do some repaving, some things like that, but nothing significant in regards to reconstructing McMurtry Lane, but that will be the primary ingress egress. I believe it's condition of approval number seven requires that the project provide a construction management plan, and we will work with the community development department in getting that approved prior to commencing construction. And I believe Commissioner Wilkerson asked a couple of questions. The first one was about the phasing of the project, or how it would all be built out. These are intended to be custom lots. They are high-end, large lots. I kind of liken it to the project at the very end of North Alamo that took, I grew up in that area, I believe it took quite a few years to get completely built out. Could people come in and build all these, and buy them, and build them in rapid succession? Yes. It could also take a little bit of time. It depends on who wants to buy, and who wants to build, and how they want to build. But they are going to each be a custom lot, high-end, beautiful home. And I believe you have one other question, Commissioner Wilkerson. Forgive me.
Access.
Oh, the emergency access. So if you look at the map there, obviously, the primary ingress egress will be through Preserve Lane, but McMurtry Lane will remain as an emergency vehicle access and emergency access for the residents there. We are also constructing a second egress, emergency egress, that goes down to Whitestone Court. So there are actually three areas of egress. We work directly with the fire department. We know this is a higher, high-hazard zone area for fire, so we work directly with the fire department to provide them and access to the site, and the 20 residents' accesses leaving the site in case of an emergency. Also, we did work with them to provide adequate landscaping around the area to keep fire danger down, so it's not like it's going to be a big dry field. There is a area where it transitions from residential housing to the existing natural habitat, which has irrigated landscape that will be maintained by the HOA, as Albert mentioned.
Once the lots are built and their custom home starts to build, are all the construction crews still going to use McMurtry Lane, or will it come down?
That would be the primary ingress egress for construction is McMurtry Lane. Now, obviously, if there's, there may be a one or two thing where there's a vehicle that can't make it there, it may be a little too narrow, or what have you, there may be some, and that would, I assume, require additional discussion with the building and community development department for those special circumstances, if that does arise. But with three areas of egress, two of them not being the primary residents, I don't see it as being a significant issue. Are there any other questions?
Commissioner Dingman, do you have any questions? I think we're good.
I have one more. There's two lots that require one-story building.
Can you explain that with the water level and the water pressure?
Yes. So as you can see in the image there, there is a water tower that is recently constructed. I believe it's been within the last five or 10 years. It was constructed for the higher zone in Cheyenne. Because this is a hillside area, there are a couple houses that are higher up the hill, and in order to provide adequate water pressure for those, they have to be limited to a single-story home, so that they have adequate water pressure. If you build a second-story home, the city facilities would not provide adequate pressure to that second story.
So how much higher does the water level have to be, or be affected? Is there a so many feet or something like that?
There's a elevation based on the zoning. I don't know it off the top of my head. Unfortunately, I don't think we have any representatives of Public Works, but there is a certain elevation, and anything above that elevation, the city does not provide service. If you guys have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them later on. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So now we're going to move on to public comment. Well, I'm going to ask everybody to take in public comment, and if there's any items that come up within public comment that we'd like to see staff address, or you want more clarification on, go ahead and bring it up, and we can have staff respond, and then we'll go through the list of all the questions, or anything that staff wants to include at the end. So I'll now open up public comment. Is there anybody that would like to speak? Please approach the podium.
Do you have a question?
Excuse me?
Do you have a question?
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Brittany Myers. I actually live on Preserve Lane, so this development directly impacts me and my family. So hello. So I know this project has been in the works for a while. We've kind of gone back and forth, you know, with Albert about the information, all the informations. So a couple of things I just wanted to point out. When I say a couple, I kind of mean several. So, one, I do, so we've already established that this development is very necessary, correct? Yes, have we established that? That it's very necessary? Oh, that's not how this works.
So we're not going to, we can't address you back, and I'll give you some...
Oh, okay. Okay, fine. This is my first time.
We'll make sure that staff...
Yes. Okay. So based on the statements that were previously made, this development is very necessary. It is needed for the city. We talked about the benefits, lots of benefits. I may have heard one. I'm just going to be honest. One specific benefit, and that's because we want to draw in lots of business, the CEOs that, you know, we want to bring in, so that way they can bring their business, and it all just fuels the city. While I do understand that, and I do support that, I would implore you to think, who are these people? I'm just curious. Since we know that this project is that urgent, and it's that necessary, I would assume the project wouldn't need to go in phases, since there's 20 CEOs waiting to buy these lots to move into Vacaville. Outside of that, I also wanted to ask some follow-up questions. Oh, but we can't ask you.
So anything that you want to have answered, we'll make sure that staff...
Oh, okay. Okay. I got you. Let's see here. So one thing that I noticed, when the comment was brought up about the cumulative impact, it was stated that this project doesn't necessarily create a flood of annexation of the different zonings within the city, but it does, however, establish a precedent. So while I understand that if we say no necessarily, or hypothetically, this is not a cause and effect type thing, it establishes a precedent within the city. So, yeah, so I just feel like if we say there's not a significant impact, based on what data? That's if we can jot that down. I've heard a lot, you know, about the details of certain projects, but in an almost hypothetical way, or very laissez-faire. But again, where's the numbers? Where's the data? We don't even know how high it is until the water pressure is affected. So, yeah, that would be, I'm just putting that out there, the data that supports we need this housing. Currently, and because I live on this street adjacent to Cheyenne, I can tell you, there are several homes, while they may not be 20,000 square feet, or whatever the case may be, that establish in this new development, they're sitting empty with a for-sale sign up front. I would assume these CEOs could potentially move into there. There's several vacant homes within Cheyenne that are currently still on the market. These CEOs could maybe look at those listings. So when we talk about how needed this project is, it sounds a bit like it comes off as, it's beneficial for who? That's how, I guess I just don't understand. So yes, it's needed, it's very beneficial. You stated that this aligns with Vacaville's general project proposal, whatever the case may be. However, when that was originally established, and it's reviewed every so often, this parcel or this agricultural hillside location, it was never, at that time, annexed within the city limits. So at that time, somebody didn't think it was that important. So, okay. Sorry.
And then give you just 30 more seconds.
Yes. Okay. So it was also stated, this project improves the executive housing initiative in Vacaville, but the city has recently come out stating that the focus was for more affordable housing. So that just seems kind of contradictory. So if I can get more elaboration and context on that, that would be good. It was discussed about the noise and traffic during construction, but what about those factors after construction? If we can, you know, get clarification on that.
Thank you very much.
Yes. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment?
I thought I would address some of the issues that she's raised. First of all, benefits there through, can I have a, Albert, can we have the site plan up there? As representing the applicant, I might need a minute or two more, since she took two or three minutes.
Give me five minutes.
So White Oak Court, there's going to be a water line extending up through that area, and providing a loop, so there'll be a fire access loop of water to improve the firefighting capabilities in that area. We've worked with Chief Pressiato, who used to be the fire chief here at Vacaville, lives in Cheyenne, and he is very excited about this very needed access. We are also providing access trail from White Oak over to this, to provide a loop for pedestrian access. If you've lived in Vacaville a long time, like I have, there's a propensity for fires to come from the north and into this area. The entire area on the north end of that subdivision is going to be irrigated landscaping, so this subdivision will help protect the homes on Preserve Lane. So these are just a number of the benefits that will be afforded here. Also, if you've lived in Vacaville a long time, you'll know that there are virtually no custom homes that can be built on. So in terms of the city's overall plan, this is a difficult time to build homes right now, and sure, there might be a couple of vacant homes on her street, but we need desperately in this community, custom homes. We don't have any. And I, nobody's been more involved in that line of business in Vacaville than I have, and we don't have any, zero. So if there's a business that wants to come to Vacaville, they have no opportunity, no, the CEOs have no opportunity to build in this community. And to me, that's tragedy. So yes, we need affordable homes, habitat for humanity and all, but we also need the executive homes. So this is a desperately needed project. Now, I should mention also that we submitted plans when I was the engineer for the Cheyenne project 20-plus years ago. We included this property in those initial plans. There was concern about things, and it took us quite a while, and we actually submitted an application in 2019, three years before she moved into her house. So we've been planning this for quite a long time. It's needed, it's a benefit, and I really would request your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to public comment?
Hi, my name is Chris Whitaker. Lived in Vacaville for nine years. Family's been here for over 40 years. I'm going to put my farm preservation hat away today and try to be more planning-specific with some of my questions. As far as some of the compliance with the housing element, I think this housing gap that I think was identified for this executive component, but are there any guarantees that these executives are actually going to work in Vacaville? I mean, they could be in Sacramento, they could be in Fairfield, or Napa, or wherever. There's no, is there any guarantee that these executives are actually going to be for Vacaville benefit? The other part of that, too, is are there any other places like Lagoon Valley that close that gap on the executive housing? And who's tracking that, right? Who's monitoring the compliance of when you're in compliance with that housing gap? The other thing, as far as the Lafco orderly growth to discourage urban sprawl, I'm wondering how this project complies with that. And aside from the check in the executive business housing gap box, how will this benefit? Not to say will it benefit, but how will this benefit the community of Vacaville? Thanks for your...
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else that would like to address Commissioner staff? I'll now close public comment. And would anybody like to address any of the comments that they'd like staff to address? Commissioner Dingman, do you have any comments about, that you'd like staff to comment on?
No, thank you.
Okay. Albert?
Well, there were just a few questions that I think I could help clarify on. Does Lagoon Valley provide a gap? And they will. They do provide, they're aiming to provide some executive housing also. The city does monitor it. We provide a annual report about compliance with the housing element, where we do track how we're satisfying our RENA numbers, and what areas are we providing for executive housing.
And is executive housing a part of the RENA numbers, or do we track specifically what is considered an executive house?
It's above moderates, moderate, and then low-income housing.
Yeah.
On a regular basis, we do track it, and I see Director Morris has pinged to provide some additional information.
Thank you, Trulite. So it was really Vacaville's housing strategy which preceded our housing element, where the need for executive housing was really documented, and this was not a state-of-California-driven housing study, this was a Vacaville-driven housing study, and really, it was looking at the nexus between our economic development goals, the kind of businesses we're trying to attract here to Vacaville, which are all kinds of businesses, and they're not just high-end executives, there's also retail service workers and others. And then what kind of housing does Vacaville need to align with those needs created by the jobs that we have and the jobs that we want? And that's really where I would say the focus on, and wasn't just a focus on executive housing, the focus on all kinds of housing surfaced, but executive housing in particular, because as Mr. Filipe points out, we don't have custom lots in Vacaville right now. Lagoon Valley will provide some in some future phases that are not yet under construction and are not yet ready to go. So it is a need, and it has, and I don't know, we do track our above-moderate production. We've met all of our above-moderate needs for this housing cycle, and still have several years to go. With regard to executive housing, I actually believe it's really less quantitative than the other kinds of housing. It'll be, its value would be demonstrated when we do attract those large companies, when we see the expansion of companies like Lonza, when we see them moving people to our area, and that they're able to purchase a home here and build a home here in Vacaville. So it's a little squishier than the low-income housing numbers and the other things that we can track more meticulously.
Thank you.
Just a couple more for the commission. There was a question about, does the project comply with Lafco for not allowing urban sprawl? And would say yes, because on our map, you'll see on the screen that the pink line, as well as the green line, those are the outermost extent of where we had planned to see growth occurring. The urban growth boundary in green was adopted in 2008 by the city council, and the sphere of influence in pink was adopted by Solana Lafco in 2017. So we're not going beyond that limit, we're still within that boundary. Then I think the director mentioned the benefits to Vacaville associated with executive housing.
And it was brought up again, cumulative impacts about other outside, or the sphere of influence projects. So it's interesting, tonight we have two on the agenda. We have plans...
We have plans going forward, right, that are going to go into that sphere of influence. So it's pretty, it started, and what kicked that off really? It was, we reviewed the urban growth area within the last year, right? And those areas were designated out the sphere of influence, correct? And we discussed that?
I think our director has a pretty good timeline for the commission.
Thank you, Albert. Thank you, Trulite. But so the cities, as Albert said, the city's urban growth boundary was established in 2008, and it remains in place unless the voters change it through the year 2028. So both the project that's before you now and the project that will be here later are all within the urban growth boundary, they're within the city sphere. And so they're not, it's not, for example, in some of our adjacent counties where cities are planning like well outside, this is all inside the lines. So the catalyst for these projects is unique to the applicants that are bringing them forward at this time. But fundamentally, again, they're not coming in with a site that's randomly outside of Vacaville, let's talk about bringing it into Vacaville, it's outside of Vacaville now, but it's within our ultimate boundary. So, and the urban reserve site that's later, which we'll talk about, there's probably more, we can explain more when we get to that item.
Great.
About why now?
Thank you.
Anybody else have a question for staff? Commissioner Beaumont?
I have a final comment, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Yeah, that's fine.
I had a couple of concerns, and one of them was the size of the project, and the size of the project is small compared to what it could be. And so being developed through an already-developed area, 20 lots, to me is not substantial. And I think keeping everything off Preserve Lane is the main thing that I was worried about, that McMurtry would be used as a bypass to keep the residence street clear of all construction, equipment, people, whatever. So as long as that's done, I have no problem with approving this project.
Commissioner Dingman, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, thank you.
So I'll ask, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the project. I think that's approved. Okay, simple motion, recommend that the city council approve the project.
Okay, so I have a motion from Commissioner Beaumont and a second from Commissioner Banta. Can I please have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Banta?
Yes.
Commissioner Beaumont?
Yes.
Commissioner Dingman?
Yep.
Vice Chair Wilkerson?
Yes.
Chair Lightfoot?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. So we'll now move on to 7B. This is a public hearing on the Fields at Alamo Creek subdivision. So we'll first hear a presentation by staff, followed by commissioner questions, and then we'll open up public comment. And we'll let staff get settled, and we'll be ready to hear their presentation.
Good evening, Chair, Planning Commissioners, and members of the public. This item before you tonight is the Fields at Alamo Creek subdivision. So the request before you tonight is to annex 33.6 acres of land located in unincorporated Solano County, located south of Hawkins Road and approximately half a mile east of Leisure Town Road, into the city of Vacaville in order to create 241 lots for detached and attached single-family residential development. The specific entitlements before you tonight include an environmental assessment, specifically a supplemental environmental impact report, an amendment to the general plan, an annexation request, a pre-zoning request, a proposed development agreement, an amendment to the previously-approved Farm at Alamo Creek specific plan, and then also a tentative subdivision map to subdivide the land into the 241 lots. So this map here shows the location of the project in relation to the city. The project's located at the eastern edge of the city, just outside city limits. The map on the right shows the location of the project in relation to the previously-approved Farm at Alamo Creek project. As you can see, it's located to the south of Hawkins Road, north of Elmira Road, north of the constructed Brighton Landy neighborhood out there. And then in purple, you can see what was the previously-approved Farm at Alamo Creek So for some background on this project, in 2015, the city council adopted a comprehensive update to the city's general plan, outlining what the future of Vacaville would look like up until 2035. And in that general plan, this project site was designated as urban reserve. The urban reserve land use designation is used to provide flexibility for areas that the city anticipates annexing in the future, but wants to provide flexibility as to what the specific land uses are. The project was also designated, a portion of it was designated agricultural buffer, and this is due to general plan policies that specify that an agricultural buffer should be created between the city and existing operations for agriculture in Solano County. In 2018, the city council approved the neighboring project, which is the Farm at Alamo Creek. This consists of 768 attached and detached single-family homes, along with seven and a half acres of neighborhood commercial land, an 11.2-acre community park, the existing play-for-all park that you see out there, along with 7.2 acres of private parks, and also 28 acres of open space and agricultural buffer. In 2021, the city council initiated a general plan amendment for this project, which is the Fields at Alamo Creek. And in 2022, the applicant submitted a formal development application after receiving that initiation by city council. So this map here shows the location of the project site along with the subdivision layout. The project would create 241 lots for single-family homes along with a 0.6-acre parcel for a future privately-maintained pocket park, and also an acre for open space and agricultural So this project contains a number of different entitlements. The first is a general plan amendment to change the land use designation from urban reserve to residential medium density to facilitate that new housing development. The project would also annex 33.6 acres of land from Solano County into city of Vacaville city limits. The project would be pre-zoned to residential medium density, along with public facilities with an agricultural buffer overlay for that open space portion. The project site would be subdivided into 241 lots, 153 of which would be for detached single-family homes, and 88 of which would be for duets, which are single-family homes that are attached in pairs. There would also be a 0.6-acre parcel for a privately-maintained pocket park, and then a 7.2-acre water detention basin that would also service an agricultural buffer. It would also contain passive recreational amenities for future residents such as trails. This map here shows the proposed general plan change. On the left, you can see that the project site is designated urban reserve, and that would be changed to residential medium density. And then for this project, because it's located outside city limits, there's currently no city of Vacaville zoning. And so once annexed in, the project would be zoned residential medium density and public facilities with an agricultural buffer overlay. And so as part of staff's review of the project, we have to evaluate all the different entitlement applications to ensure consistency with various city policies and regulations. For the general plan amendment, the project is proposing to convert the land from urban reserve to residential medium density, and also to amend general plan policies that relate to development in the east of Leisure Town area, which this project's located in, specifically related to development east of Caraway and near the agricultural buffer. The project would amend the policy, also amend the policy that requires lots adjacent to the agricultural buffer to be a minimum of 10,000 square feet. And so staff is supporting the proposed amendments because they will help to facilitate the development of additional missing middle housing, which the city has a documented need for in our housing element. The project also includes the annexation request, and based on staff's evaluation, the project can be served by existing utilities that would be constructed as part of the adjacent Farm at Alamo Creek project. If this project were to be approved, a subsequent application would need to be submitted to Solano LAFCO in order to annex the project into the city. And the city would also need to enter into a new tax sharing agreement with the county and finalize the update to the municipal services review. And then once the project is annexed in, the project site would be pre-zoned or would be zoned residential medium density and public facilities. And the existing development standards that exist for those zoning districts would then be applied to future development at the site. The project also includes a tentative subdivision map, so the land would then be subdivided once the project is annexed into city limits. And that includes 241 lots for the detached single-family homes and the duets. And then a homeowners association would be required to maintain the pocket park parcel. And so, upon reviewing the development application, staff has found that the project does comply with city's general plan policies and meets the required findings for approval. The project also does contain a development agreement, and the development agreement is a mutual agreement between the city and the applicant to assure different obligations. On the city's side, the city will honor the project approval for 15 years. And within 30 days of approval of the city's MSR update and the new master property tax sharing agreement with the county, the city will then submit that annexation application to LAFCO. And on the developer's side, the developer will annex the project into a community facilities district using the city's adopted methodology for calculating a project's fiscal impact, and this is due to general plan policies. The project will also be annexed into a lighting, landscaping, and maintenance district to take care of the open space agricultural buffer parcel. The applicant is also required to preserve and create one acre of agricultural land for every acre of agricultural land being developed into residential properties. And then the applicant will also be fully constructing and improving the agricultural buffer site with a detention basin and also the trails. As part of the development agreement, there are a few items related to parks. Specifically, per the general plan, all city-owned neighborhood parks must be at least six acres. And so the DA affirms that because the pocket park is not meeting that six-acre requirement, the pocket park will be privately owned and maintained. And then also, the applicant will be contributing via park development impact fees towards the need for a neighborhood park. The pocket park that the applicant is proposing is not eligible for fee credits because it does not meet that neighborhood park standard of six acres. And then pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA, the city has to disclose any environmental impacts associated with the project, identify alternatives, and also identify potential mitigation measures that could be used to reduce those impacts. So the city prepared a supplemental environmental impact report to the previous environmental analysis that was prepared for the Farm at Alamo Creek. And in that report, we identified that there would be a significant unavoidable impact to transportation and traffic, specifically related to vehicle miles traveled, and that there are no feasible mitigation measures that would reduce that impact to less than significant. The document was published for public review, and the planning commission did hold a study session on that document. And the city did prepare a final SEIR in order to address those public comments, and did prepare also findings of fact and a statement overriding considerations regarding that unavoidable impact to vehicle miles traveled, specifically that the project would provide more diverse housing for the city, including missing middle housing, it would extend the agricultural buffer between the city and the county, and also would incorporate sustainable design features such as all-electric homes. Because the city's, or because the project's amending the general plan and the zoning map, the project also has to be referred to the Airport Land Use Commission for consistency with the Travis Air Force Base Consistency or Compatibility Plan. And the commission did find the project consistent with the plan subject to some conditions of approval regarding the design of the detention basin and also notice regarding airport operations to future home buyers. As with any project, the city did conduct many, much public outreach for the project. In March of 2023, the city issued a notice of preparation for the environmental impact report. In April 2023, we held a virtual scoping meeting to find out what topics the public believes should be included in that report. In July of 2023, due to changes in the project, a revised notice was sent out, and another, a revised notice was sent out. In February 2024, we sent out a mailing saying that the draft environmental impact report was available for comment. And then in July of this year, we mailed out a public hearing notice for this public hearing before the planning commission. And so to conclude, staff does support the proposed project because it does increase the variety of housing types and sizes within the Farm at Alamo Creek specific plan area. The environmental impacts can be mitigated to less than significant, except for that VMT's significant impact, which can be overridden due to the considerations that were mentioned earlier. The project will also be served by those future improvements that will be constructed as part of the farm. And so with that, the project does meet the required findings for approval, it will be consistent with the general plan, zoning, and state law, and it will also comply with the development standards in the specific plan. And so staff is recommending that by simple motion, the commission recommend that the city council approve the project. And so that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any commissioner questions? Commissioner Beaumont?
Thank you. Thank you, Noah. Appreciate the briefing. Remind me again, the farm, is it going to start being built before this? Because it has, the improvements have to be done in the farm before this can be built, right?
That's correct. So the farm does have to be built, so that way those future improvements can be extended to the fields.
So they could just put the improvements in and build this, and then do the farm afterwards, though, right?
The public improvements are necessary to be built with the farm to be extended to the periphery of this project. So the phases in the farm have to be built, and then the field would be able to proceed.
Okay, thank you. And this is an all-electric development, is that right?
That's correct.
So, excuse me, but I'm old, but back in the 60s, we tried this, and the people that own those homes got electric bills that were unbelievable. And I think it's a bad deal to do all-electric homes, even though we're ecologically trying to be right with this. I believe that's a bad thing for this city to do. That's just my opinion. I see the duets are in one cluster. Normally, when I see the projects that have duets, they're spaced around the development. Is there some reason they're in a cluster?
We do have a representative of the property owner who can answer that question.
Okay. I see there's some disagreements here with fees and with the pocket park. How does that get resolved?
The applicant has stated that they are agreeable to the development agreement as proposed. There were some issues that came up as part of the development agreement negotiation process that we didn't want to highlight, but the applicant has indicated that they do agree with the development agreement as included in the staff report packet.
Okay, does that include the pocket park, or is that still a problem?
That includes the pocket park being privately maintained, yes.
So that'll be an HOA problem for them?
That's correct.
Okay. And I noticed the size of the lots are fairly small, so the housing, I guess, is supposed to be a little smaller than what would be normally we would see? 600 square feet and 2,000 for duets?
That's correct. The smaller lot sizes, and then also the proposed development standards would result in smaller house sizes.
So is that going to fill in our gap of low to medium RENA housing?
It's expected that the project or the future home designs will be smaller houses that can accommodate different housing needs identified in the housing element.
Okay, great. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Beaumont. Commissioner Banta?
Thank you for the presentation. I appreciate the proposed project, especially with the residential medium density. On page 296, it talks about the summary of the development standards. Is the residential medium for the single-family lots and the duets, is that consistent with our other residential mediums projects in the rest of our city? Or is there differences?
So this is table one.
Table one on 296.
Can you repeat the question?
Are these development standards consistent with other residential medium density projects in the rest of our city and our standards? Or is there something different in here that's being proposed?
No, it's consistent with our existing standards. I would say that over the years, our zoning standards have changed. So if you get something that's built in the 60s or 70s, our standards have been modified to try and encourage that kind of development. You'll see parking standards differently, setbacks, building height standards have changed over time.
Okay. And then that would currently do my next question is, which other projects or neighborhoods in the city are residential medium? That may be similar to this project?
So the closest anticipated area that would have something similar to would be in the farm, and that's identified on the screen in front of you, shows the residential high-medium right there, located over on Elmira Road, and then further within the side. So that'd be the closest. So that'd be the closest area. To the south, you're, you're seeing a lot of residential low-medium density and residential low-density. That's part of the reason why this is identified for medium is because the surrounding areas are lower density, and we're trying to fill in that gap of missing middle.
Awesome. Thank you. I had a similar question to Commissioner Beaumont about the proposed plan for the disagreement on the park and the fee credits. My question is, I believe I saw that there was a clause in there that they may just be able to take the park out. Is that still stand?
That's correct. That's still in the development agreement.
Okay. And then my third question is, on April 2000, in April 2023, there was a virtual meeting held. How many people participated in that meeting? Was there participants? Usually it's noted, and there wasn't.
There, there were a few participants in that meeting. I don't remember the exact number, but it was about three to five-ish.
Very low. Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Banta. Commissioner Dingman, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I have a couple. Thank you very much, Noah, for the presentation. Appreciate it. Understand how much work goes into these. My first one has to do with traffic congestion on Leisure Town and Hawkins. Obviously, there's been a lot of construction on Leisure Town. I just wanted to know, was this housing development taking into consideration with the expansion of the Leisure Town and all the stuff that's been built back there? Obviously, I'm the new guy on the commission, but just wondering if you could explain and talk through that a little bit? Does that, that from U-Lattice to Hawkins, Little Bend and Leisure Town, it's, it's pretty, pretty dangerous place right in there, so I just want to understand that a little bit better.
Commissioner Dingman, this is Albert Inault. The, the Farm at Alamo Creek will need to perform frontage improvements along El Myra Road in order to be able to build out the extent of the project as well as along Hawkins Road. So there are some plans to improve the roadways along those two areas. The other portion along Leisure Town Road was completed as part of the Phase Two of Jepson Parkway, and there look, that, that component of the project is still continuing north and will be approved along the frontage of Green Tree also. So with those particular improvements, once those improvements are in place, then the project could be served by those roadways.
Does that answer your question, Commissioner Dingman?
Yeah, thank you very much, Albert. Appreciate that. And I also noticed that there were no new schools that were discussed in this proposal. And with the other housing areas and this one, obviously, that's going to be, that's being proposed, is that being addressed? And could you speak to, you know, what we're doing about the impact of more students and, you know, the quality of schools and what we can expect here in the future?
Yeah, as part of the development review process, we did reach out to the Vacaville Unified School District to make sure that they were involved in the development review process and reviewed this proposal. As part of this project, is, does involve a somewhat small area of 241 units, and so in this particular case, when the developer doesn't, is unable to provide the land, which it's a pretty small area, there is another alternative to mitigate for the impacts created on schools, which is allowed through SB, SB 50, and that is for the development to pay for school impact fees, and then the school will decide exactly how they'll use those funds to improve maybe their existing facilities to be able to serve those future residents.
All right, Albert. Appreciate that. And this last question is similar on the same lines, but there's no mention of growth services, obviously, or expansion of retail or grocery options in this. Is there a plan for this in the future? I understand that some of these things are market-driven, but just understanding that there's not a lot of options on that side of the city. Just would like to hear from you if there's any plans for anything like that in the future.
So the Farm at Alamo Creek did include a couple of commercial areas. One's located, I think it's already been built, at the corner of Leisure Town Road and El Myra, the Jepson Center. And then there's another commercial area that would be built closer to Hawkins Road that would, that's intended to serve the farm as well as the Fields Project.
Okay, but nothing as far as like a major grocery store or anything like that in that area, just the smaller like gas station and smaller retail?
Not, not in this plan. There is more development located north within the Green Tree Development that anticipated a much more commercial. That would be, that would include tenant spaces for anchor tenants such as grocery stores.
Okay. Thank you very much. That's all I have.
All right. Do we have any other questions? Oh, Commissioner Beaumont.
I forgot to ask a real stupid question, but since this is all-electric, do they put gas lines in that development?
But that's an excellent question for the applicant, I think would be a great opportunity to bring them up and kind of elaborate what their experience has been with that.
Okay. Thank you.
So let's do that. So if the applicant come up, we just have, I have two questions that I wrote down.
Good evening. I'm Christopher Hobels on behalf of GNW Holdings, the property owner. I do have some comments. I can go to your questions first if you want, or comments first.
Go ahead.
So I appreciate your comment regarding the questions on the park. There are still some, some areas that we would like the planning commission to consider. This project, we initially submitted in April of 2019. So for the person that was concerned about a rush of annexations, I don't think it's going to be in a super hurry. So we are very excited to actually be before you and present this project. Initially, we had really targeted this as a first-time homebuyer project. Working with staff, we have incorporated some revisions into the project to hit the missing middle target area that staff and city have identified as important. We believe we've, we meet that requirement now. We have reviewed the conditions of approval, the nearly 350 between the special conditions and standard conditions. We accept the obligations of those conditions. We do have some comments and questions on the development agreement related to two items. One is participation in a CFD for police and fire service. We're not opposed to that, but we are concerned that it's an undefined undetermined amount. We would like to have that identified. Also, we have concerns regarding the lack of public parks within the east of Leisure Town area, and so we'd like to address those. Both of these matters pertain to really equality and parity in projects. We want to make sure that this project is on equal footing with other projects and does not have a commercial disadvantage to being able to bring this project to market and unfairly advantaged. And we also are concerned that we don't create an unfair burden for the future homeowners or residents in this project. As the project is, is set, we have a, we required a fiscal analysis for the project and a development agreement. And I mentioned parity. The project right before you did not require a development agreement nor fiscal analysis. So there are some uniquenesses with this project, and so we are comfortable with the development agreement. We just don't want it to put us at a commercial disadvantage to being able to bring this project to market and fulfill the obligations that have been provided. The first of the two issues, as I mentioned, is the community facilities district assessment. We presented a project with an applicant, our application identified as part of our project description, we would participate in community facility district number eight to pay for police and fire services. We provided a fiscal analysis. They identified that the project was fiscally positive and that the augmentation from CFD eight was just that augmentation above and beyond the required services. That did not satisfy staff, and they raised concerns regarding how the fiscal analysis was done. We followed the process that was done for, for prior fiscal analysis, and the city's received four fiscal analyses probably in the last 10 years. Those include North Village, Green Tree, South Town Apartments, and the Fields Project. With North Village, the project was found to be fiscally positive for the city, and but it also participated in CFD eight, and that made the project actually provide a augmentation of revenue above and beyond service needs. Green Tree was found to be fiscally positive, and the city did not require any CFD for services for fire, police, or any other city services. South Town Apartments, pretty unique project in this particular case, did a fiscal analysis. I don't know that anybody really saw it, but the applicant did agree to a one-time fee for offsetting project costs, but they were identified as fiscally positive. And then on ours, we identified, it was identified initially as fiscally positive, and the intent was to provide participation in CFD eight, so we would provide augmentation over and above what our minimum obligation was. Staff was not satisfied with that. They started to change some of the parameters on which the project was evaluated in fiscal analysis. Rather than having a proportional share of police and fire costs attributed to the project, they moved it to 100%. They also added 100% of the, of parks and in public works, yeah, parks and public works as well and 100% of the cost. That just is contrary to the fact that the city is comprised of about 55% of the land area is residential and 45% is non, non-residential. Those non-residential areas, that 45%, also has a demand for public, for public services, police, fire. And it also is land uses that are producing revenue for the city. Yep. Business, professional, office, commercial, and retail, and industrial in those areas that are producing revenue. Those revenues were not considered as being charged against police and fire, and staff was moving it to 100%. So we're concerned with the methodology that staff is using on the fiscal analysis, and the way the project development agreement is structured is it's deferring it to a future study. And we're concerned that we're writing an open check as to what this future study may be. We would like to be measured at the same parameters that the prior projects, North Village and Green Tree, were established. We feel at a disadvantage with Green Tree in that they have no CFD for police or fire service. So, and, and these costs are going to be borne by our residents that move into these homes. They will be paying the annual assessment. So it, it puts those residents at a disadvantage for qualifying for those homes. These are the missing middle. We're trying to do whatever we can to bring these folks into the city and have them qualify for homes, but yet we're putting a burden on them that the people, the residents in Green Tree don't have to pay. So we're, we're really rewarding the folks that aren't paying for police and fire service, and we're, and we're burdening the folks that are paying for it. So.
You don't mind me interrupting?
Hey, Commissioner?
So.
Yeah, so I, let's let the applicant finish, and then I was going to go to Director Morris, and she's, I'm sure she's going to address it, and we'll, we will get into it.
I'll take that. Right, I would say, yes, it is in your purview because it's a component of the development agreement, and you're, you're a recommending body to the city council, so it's, it's a matter of recommendation, not an action. It's not going to be holding any, any standing that will be going forward. It's merely a recommendation to the planning commission. I would appreciate your input and recommendation to them. So in regard to the, to the fiscal and the CFD, we absolutely want to pay a CFD for police and fire service. We think it's very important. We would just like to have it established at a set amount. That set amount, we believe, is, is CFD eight. It pays more than our fair share, and so that is a component that we would like to have incorporated into the development agreement. Additionally, the, you brought up the parks. The parks, we're concerned with the parks in that we wanted to bring an element to this community that was community building. We looked around, Roberts Ranch has stroller parks, half-acre park that is a wonderful element to those neighborhoods. If you think about it, how do we meet our neighbors? We meet our neighbors through our kids. And so that park is phenomenal community building, and we wanted to bring that to this project as well. So the difficulty is Roberts Ranch received park credits and reimbursements for that park and it's city-owned. So we're being challenged in that this park has to be developer, developed and paid for, and now homeowner association maintained. We would like parity with Roberts Ranch and to be able to receive park credits or reimbursements for building that park. We're also kind of at double jeopardy in that we have to pay park fees, and right now the city is considering park fees in the neighborhood of 27,000 hours. This project, just these homes, would generate $6.5 million in park fees to the city. So for us to have to build a million-dollar park and pay $6.5 million in, in park fees, we don't feel is an equitable position to be in. We'd like to provide the park. We think the best way to do it is with a reimbursement and have the city maintain it rather than that burden falling on the residents through an HOA. So we think that's the most efficient, it's the most equitable, and it's been done before. So these are really the two items that we have questions about or concerns with, would like to have the planning commission's recommendation to council. Is, is it appropriate to identify the CFD amount and do that in the development agreement now so we don't have a unanswered question in the future? Also, that we have the opportunity to have the parks be done as a public park and reimbursed through the city. We do have an element in there that allows us to delete the park if the developer chooses to do so. And I can tell you, if we have to pay $6.5 million in park fees, there is no way the project will support development of a million-dollar park, much less the burden putting on the homeowners with additional HOA cost. So those are my comments on that. I appreciate your time on that. I want to thank Noah in his work in this project. Over the past six years, we've had seven different staffers from planning and community development on it, and I'm confident if it wasn't for Noah, I wouldn't be here tonight. So I thank you, Noah, for that. Appreciate it very much. We'd request your favorable recommendation to council, and I've got some answers for some questions that were brought up if this is any else.
Yeah, so one was the design of the project, and why did you choose to cluster the duets together rather than mix them in?
Yes, the, it's really efficiency. So if we were to put the clusters around the outside of the project, it's really inefficient in the subdivision construction. So it frankly, it costs more. And so we were looking for an element, how do we incorporate it into the neighborhood, not put it just on the edge, but have it as a component of the overall neighborhood? That is the design we came up with. I can't tell you that there's something magic to it, but that was efficiency and incorporation into the, the overall project. There was a question regarding improvements. Yes, the farm would have to develop first, or this project could go concurrently with the farm. There's a potential that this might sell to the same developer that purchases the farm, and if that's the case, they may choose to do it all at one time. The all-electric, I appreciate your concerns on that. I can tell you that there is some improvements on, on electric. Heat pumps are more efficient, and with the solar, it really tempers what the improvement costs are going to be. Solar is going to be, is mandatory now on new homes, so I think that those, those bills can be drastically reduced. The project will not have gas within the subdivision itself, so it's just not a component of it. Let's see. There was a question regarding the RENA allocation. These units are not in the city right now, so they're not a part of the RENA, but the city could utilize them as a, as a future RENA allocation, and I'm sure Aaron will probably certainly use that to, to make their case for a future RENA allocation. Let's, Commissioner Banta, you had a question regarding the standards. Are we deviating from anything different? The standards that we have are actually the same as what's already in the farm at Alamo Creek. So the, the setbacks and development standards are just a replication of what's already existing out there. You had a question, is there any other projects? The Portofino project and Tom, the Portofino and Butcher? Portofino and Butcher. So these are existing duplexes that are already in the city. So the component in the farm replicates that, and this does it as well. I would add, those are attached units. The zoning allows for detached product as well, and there is detached product that would fit on these. Staff had a preference for an attached product, so that's what we provided. I answered a question on the park ability to delete. Mr. Damon's question regarding Hawkins and Leisure Town. The farm does have an obligation for realignment of Hawkins with U-Lattice. There'll be a signal light there, so right now those streets are offset. Those will be realigned to bring that to a standard four-way intersection on Hawkins. They will improve Hawkins along the frontage of their project and will do it on the frontage of, of ours. Schools, I hear the concern on that. It's ours as well. The project would be within a proximity. The project would be within a proximity of the Kairos Charter School for, for preference. So we have that as well as the public schools in there as well. And shopping, we'd love to have that in our neighborhood as well, but it just, putting it on the edge of town just doesn't make a lot of sense. So any other questions, I'd be happy to, to take them.
I thought you said, did you say that the projects, the farming fields could go concurrently?
Yes.
Impetus to that?
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. Because there's common infrastructure on it. So if you had a master developer that purchased both projects, then they could, they could just handle all as one development project. So, so, and I think there was a question is, could we build the infrastructure through the farm? Yes, we could do a private agreement to build that infrastructure through the farm. Financially, the project can't support that. So we're gonna, we'll be waiting in line or go concurrently.
Sorry, I asked a question out of turn. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And if you have any other questions, I'd be glad to come back.
Yep. So Director Morris, I'll, I'll give you my rundown of what, kind of what I'd like you to address the, so regarding park fees and the CFDs. So I know that there's a lot that goes into that. Years, it seems like, right? So me, myself and what the applicant's asking, there's much more time and, and numbers that would need to be gone over before a decision like that amending the agreement here in this meeting. What are your thoughts on that?
The issue of the city's methodology for establishing CFDs has, is something that has risen to the city council's level. There is a recognition that over the last 20 to 30 years, the city of Vacaville has used an inconsistent methodology, almost on a project by project basis in establishing the, kind of the method for the fiscal impact analysis, the inputs and therefore the outcomes vary a lot. So a lot of this project, and what took us a while to get here was going back and forth about the fiscal impact analysis and the methodology, starting with a study from a professional that had an error in it. And then Mr. Ruble submitted multiple studies he prepared himself. At the end of the day, in order to not hold up this project, staff structured the DA. And going into this meeting, we believe the applicant was in agreement that they wanted to move forward with the DA as written that allows the project to go through a fiscal impact analysis once the city council of Vacaville has adopted a standard methodology. So we have this really old and thin CFD policy in Vacaville and that's actively in the process of being updated by my staff and the finance director and our city attorney's office who may be sitting to my right. A city working group is basically working on bringing forward a revised study, a revised methodology with a revised and clear fiscal approach that would go to the development community in September for their review and discussion and input. And our goal is to get it to council for a study session and an adoption later this year. So there is an option for this project to be put on hold until such time as that gets resolved. I did want to point out that the Green Tree project doesn't have a CFD, but the Green Tree project also has a 299,000 square foot shopping center. And so it's not an apples to apples comparison because of that commercial component. The North Village AP2 project is not conditioned to do a specific CFD. It is conditioned to do a fiscal impact analysis at a later time. So it's not quite, they're not quite fair comparators to this project. But if, if the applicant wants to put the project on hold and wait for the fiscal to get resolved, that's something that's an option. On the topic of the parks.
No. So.
On the topic.
You just didn't public comment.
Yeah, parks. Staff generally believe that this project benefits from having a small park. Early on, the applicant talked about market disadvantages or advantages, and that's not really staff's bailiwick, but the farm has a private swim center and two small parks. So staff felt that the inclusion of a small park in the farm, in the field would be great. However, really in an effort to be flexible and to allow this project to move forward, when the applicant requested the DA allow that park to be dropped out of the project, we said, okay, we want to move this project forward. So we feel like we've been flexible on that point. If you have any other clarifying questions about fiscal impact analyses, I don't have the finance director here, but I can try to answer them.
So I think let's, let's just tackle that. Just get everybody here that's, that's here present. Does anybody have questions about specifically the park fees or the CFD on this project?
Are we qualified to make that?
So I think, so I think we're, we are qualified to amend the development agreement in this meeting, yes, right?
You can make recommendations to change the development agreement that would be considered by the council.
Yes. So, and so we can discuss it, correct? The, I think that it's our job as a commission to decide if it's something that we feel like we can undertake. I'm of the opinion that there's a lot more that goes into it than what we've been presented within this meeting and this packet. Me, myself is, the answer is no. But we can discuss it for sure.
Can we, just for the sake of argument, can we approve this? All the two disagreements continue?
To me, myself, and you correct me if I'm wrong, we, so we can approve it as is. I mean, the, that's what was presented to us. And if, if the applicant doesn't like the agreement that we approve, it's gonna go on and come to another meeting if it's changed.
Okay, the agreement right now has two disagreements, isn't it, correct?
So.
The commission is recommending on the development agreement and all the, all the other project components. This project is headed towards city council. So the commission can recommend on, on all the different project components consistent with staff's recommendation. You could recommend something different than what staff's recommending. You have really the full purview to make recommendations on all the components of this project. And those will go to the council and they'll hold another public hearing, but they'll be making the final decision about the DA and the other pieces.
The packet we have includes the two disagreements, is that right?
Yes, because we, staff didn't want to hide them from the commission.
Exactly. So if we approve this, the disagreements continue on between you and the applicant?
Or does that go to the city council and then it gets resolved?
The city council will resolve this when it gets to them.
Okay.
Are you good? Yeah. Commissioner, so right now, let's just, let's just talk about those two things and then we can get into any other questions and then anything else will, can be come brought up in public comment. Commissioner Banta.
Yeah, so with the, the community development impact fee, that's what we're talking about, right?
There's a development impact fee.
Development impact fees. So this project also has to go through LAFCO still because it has to, it's unincorporated. So there's still a timeline that may take longer than when the city council decides the community development impact fees in September. So this project could potentially be pinned until they've finished those discussions in September to have a consistent development impact fee agreement, correct? And this can move forward to LAFCO or is that not what the applicant wants to do? They don't want to continue forward to LAFCO until we have that decided? That's my first question. And my second is more of a comment about the park fees. I really like that it's residential medium and typically when we do the missing middle and it's residential medium and they're smaller lots, those are targeted towards lower income, medium income community levels. And I think that it's really difficult that we take parks and quality of life benefits out of things that are for lower income communities or that we make it difficult for a developer to put in the park for a low income community. Or then we require the low income community to have HOA fees on top of the fact that they're already low income to pay for their parks. So we know that quality of that park's probably going to be lower just because of the fact of the demographic of the income level, the person that we put that is able to buy that home. So I wonder if there is anything that we can do to incentivize developers to still want to build affordable housing or low income housing without making it so difficult to have community benefits in the neighborhood. And so I don't know if that is a question or just a comment, but that's my thought on that.
I just want to clarify, Commissioner Banta, the city's development impact fee program is not before the commission. It has not been decided yet. The council is going to be considering policy options. Even the amounts being shared by the applicant, those were amounts from some couple of months ago. They're not necessarily the final amounts. So we understand as staff and you probably understand as commissioners, that of course developers are constantly running math on their projects based on best available information. But that's not before the commission tonight. The decision before the commission is about this product, this development project. And the other piece is the duet housing is not deed restricted, affordable. It's more like affordable to households at certain levels based on sort of natural market forces. So it may or may not result in low income or below income, below moderate income folks actually being in this neighborhood. It's more about the smaller starter homes that, yeah.
Does anybody else have any questions about CFDs or park impact fees? Commissioner Dingman, do you have any input?
Nothing else to add, thank you.
Okay, so we can move on from those items right now, but we can bring them back up at the end and when we go have commissioner deliberation. Okay? Sound good?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, it's good?
Sure.
Okay. So now let's, let's open it up to public comment. And we'll take public comment. I'm gonna allow everybody five minutes and we will start public comment.
Tom, I needed to correct something that the director indicated. That Green Tree development, I've read that development, the CFD, it excluded the CFDs not because of the commercial. That is not true. Staff had that report analyzed for housing only and that's what we looked at. CFDs, if you want to get affordable housing, you want to get some things built here in this town, we've got to do something about CFDs. I know this commission can't make that determination, but CFDs are killing projects in Vacaville. They are absolutely killing the affordability. We have the trifecta of, of killing housing in this community with, with inclusionary zoning that we've talked about. The fees, the latest fee that staff has presented to us, and it's not been approved yet, $124,000 all in for a single family home in Vacaville. 100, you might as well make it a million dollars. Why stop at 124,000? It's absolutely ridiculous what we're doing here. We are doing everything we can to stop development here in Vacaville. These two projects tonight, six years, they were both applied for six years ago. Staff will say it's the applicant's fault. We'll say it's staff's fault. It doesn't matter. Six years, both of them were applied for in 2019. We, I have been quoted as saying there's a war on housing. Tonight's two projects are indicative of that. These projects were set up, the one project that's on the docket right now, the field was set up for more affordable housing. You've added six years of costs, holding costs and other costs. That, you cannot do affordable housing projects and take six years. It's, and, and the environmental stuff we go through is crazy. This community was a vibrant, wonderful community when I moved here in 1980. It is being strangled economically with processes and fees and time. It's just maddening. It really is. I didn't want to come here tonight and be real negative, but I have to say something. I love Vacaville. I want houses built here. I want everybody, none of my kids live here. I have five kids. Dad, we can't afford to live in Vacaville. It's, it's a refrain over and over again. And tonight is indicative of why that is. So it, the CFDs is one arrow in the heart of development and timing and processing and everything else. We are killing Vacaville. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else like to, for a public comment?
Hi, Chris Whitaker again. I think just some of the, some of the points that I, or questions that I had is, as far as an urban reserve, what, what was it before that? What was it zoned before that? It was 2015, it was changed to an urban reserve? I guess it's a modern question. Okay, yeah, yeah. The other part of that, with the lot sizes at 3,600 square feet, as well as the reduced road width, I don't see where that's community building. I think that's going to squash everybody back into their houses. Also squawking about the parks, come on, really? You know, look at places like, like Virchell Hill in Oakdale, look at Bridle Ridge in Oakdale. Those all have the parks going congruently through them. This is just housing. This is not what Vacaville needs. But on the other end of this, you know, how many single story homes are we talking about? Are any of these homes going to have porches so we could have that community engagement? Or is everybody just going to lock themselves inside and sit on their smartphones? You know, again, I mentioned the LAFCO thing before, you know, about discouraging urban sprawl. Now, this very well may be in the green zone, but what about preserving ag land? You know, again, if this was ag land before, it's what it is right now, today, even though it might be their own zoned urban reserve. How does this, how does this project comply with that? You know, again, I think, you know, some of this thing, thank you Albert earlier for, for mentioning the annual report on, on tracking. But, you know, the other part of this, and I know it's, it's the neighboring area and there are some ag buffers, but what is this project going to do for helping with recharging the groundwater? What about any ecological and pollinator corridors that might be impacted by this? As far as public outreach, I thought that was really interesting. I don't know if anybody really thinks about what 600 feet is. That's two football fields with no end zones. That's not very far. And you're sitting out in ag land, I mean, how many mailers did you send out? Probably a handful, maybe? So it's not surprising that you didn't get any comments. And the other thing is I did notice in the, the document and the agenda that there were no public comments attached. If there were a handful of people at any of the other meetings, I'd love to see what those comments are. I think the last thing, and maybe this is a little bit more of a personal thing, but I'd really love to see some of these developments not use dead names. And by that, you drive on 80 and you see a sign that says, come live in a nature preserve. But that's not a preserve anymore. You're developing that, right? There's no farm anymore when you put homes on it. There's no fields anymore when you put, put farms on it. So I'd, I'd love to, to just quit with the dead names and some of this creative marketing. People want to fantasize about what you're demolishing. Not cool. You know, I, I mentioned that I moved here in Vacaville nine years ago, but I grew up in the city of Orange and it was named because of orange groves, seas of orange groves. In fact, it was originally called Richland because of the soil, later became Orange because of the orange groves. Any guess on how many orange groves there are now in Orange? One. It's at the back of a park backed up against the 22 freeway. So that's where Vacaville is going. So I think this, this project needs some, some revisit. It sounds like it's got some holes in it. I think the design is boring. I think it's flimsy and I don't think it's community building. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
If I wanted to follow up on Tom's comment regarding Green Tree. Both Green Tree and North Village very specifically call out that they're only analyzing the residential component of those projects in the fiscal analysis. So it did not give any revenue generation consideration towards the commercial component in either of those projects. They were basically analyzed on 100% residential. Where we're at right now, Green Tree has no CFD, has no obligation for it in the future. And it's identified in the development agreement for Green Tree that it's going to generate $700,000 annually in fiscal revenue for the city. Now, we initially utilized that same methodology as what Green Tree did on our fiscal analysis. Staff has morphed the assumptions to the point where if you utilize the same assumptions that staff is asserting for the fields on Green Tree right now, it would be negative $1.5 million annually to the city. So there's absolutely some differences in how these projects are being evaluated. For the commission tonight, I appreciate your concerns regarding this as delving into an area that doesn't feel comfortable or necessarily in your direct purview. We would request that you take action on, on the, the project tonight. We would appreciate your support. We request that. If the commission believes that a, a park should have some sort of reimbursement, please include that in, in your, in your action tonight. If you don't think that's warranted, that's fine. We'll accept your, your recommendation. On the CFD, we'd like to memorialize that as a specific number. And in that regard, if your recommendation to the council were to identify that number at this point in time, rather than continue to kick this can down the road. We've been working with the city for three years on a fiscal evaluation for this project and have yet to come to terms on what that is because of moving assumptions. I think the, the city wants a particular number, but yet the, the, the metrics don't bear it out. So again, I ask for your, your support and recommendation on the project going forward. So again, I ask for your, your support and recommendation on the project going forward. And if you are inclined to support our position on the park and CFD, we would really appreciate that. If it's not something that you feel is appropriate, we accept your recommendation on that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other one that I'd like to make a public comment? So seeing none, I'm going to close public comment. So let's, let's bring this back to staff. I, so I think that. Is there anything you want to address first, Director Morris?
The urban reserve question from Mr. Whitaker has to do with where does that designation come from? That site, that's not a zoning designation, it's a general plan designation. So this goes back to when the general plan update started, maybe in around 2011. This land and other land around it was actually shown as planned for residential development. And prior to the adoption of the general plan, there was a council decision to pull this land out of the general plan, not put it as a residential designation, but rather put it in the urban reserve. With the idea that over time, as Vacaville had a more need for more housing land, this site would convert or could convert from urban reserve to housing. So, and that is actually part of what took this project quite a while to get here was going through an analysis that staff repairs sort of along with this project and some other projects in the area to look at. Was it time to open up the urban reserve? That's something that went to council and the council ultimately said, yes. So it's actually pretty complicated. It's not just zoning. It's actually broad public policy. It's codified in our code and that was part of the gears that got us to this point. If there's other questions, I betcha my team over there can answer them.
The question about public outreach, there were a number of different public notifications. And it's not a symptom of not doing public outreach. It's more of a symptom of maybe there's just not interest in the project as a possible reason for it. But just a few examples of things that were provided to the public. We do have a public outreach strategy that obligates our team to be able to conduct certain sequencing for public outreach at certain phases in the project. And so just to recount some of this stuff, we, from the very beginning of the project, when we were looking at figuring out what to analyze in the environmental document. We held a, we sent on a notice appropriation to solicit comments, not to all residents, not just residents and property owners within vicinity of the project, but also regulatory agencies that need to review this. U.S. Fish and Wildlife, California Department of Fish and Wildlife, Caltrans. Many different agencies were involved in this. We also held a scoping meeting to consider these things. It was online recorded meeting to solicit comments back on, on that. That's another public notification associated with that. When the environmental document was available for review, we sent on another notice to the public and published also online that it was available for people to be able to look at. And then we held a public hearing in front of the planning commission that was also noticed saying we have this document ready. And then also for this particular meeting, newspaper notice was conducted for both the, the planning commission meeting that we held earlier this year as well as the one for this one. So I would say that it is unfortunate that we don't have a lot of public comments associated with it. But I wouldn't say it was because we didn't send out notification or we didn't make an effort to try and reach the public.
Do you have anything other notes that you want to go over? Are you good? The, so what about, so let's, let's talk about the, the park requirements a little bit. So in this proposal, we are suggesting that there is a park paid for by the developer with HOA fees. Do you understand the, the thought process that Commissioner Banta brought up? That if we're targeting low income housing and we're bringing it and we're burdening that housing with an HOA fee. Tell us the process that went into deciding your factor in what it is you came up with in the development agreement?
So I, I wouldn't say that we're targeting low income housing because there's no restriction within development agreement. We're trying to target affordable by design. Smaller homes means a lower price point, still dictated by the market overall. So whatever the market can bear for the sale of those lots. I will say the comparison of, of this, we, we worked with our park planners over in the Parks and Recreation Department. And so what we try to do is maintain good consistent methods that are consistent with the general plan as well as a Parks and Recreation master plan. And so in this particular sense is that when you have new development that generates certain need of park size as well as location of park, that there's a couple of different options. Either you can design a park size that meets our general plan within the development or you can pay park development impact fees. And so with this project site being 33 acres and 241 units, the amount of size that would be needed would be six acres for a neighborhood park. Well, the displacement of six acres within their development shrinks down the number of units that they could have. And so the alternate solution is to pay the park development impact fees, which is consistent with what we've done. To allow a park that is less than the city's standard of six acres and then for which they would able to get park impact fee credits would be inconsistent with our general plan policies. You can't do that. To the question about consistency with other development, Robert Ranch was brought up. Robert Ranch, the amount of unit development that was required, that, that generated the need for a park. They were able to accommodate the park within their development. And that's the park that's located along the eastern edge near the train tracks where they've got the small dog park and the large dog park. And they've got a, a number of different phases. That is how they addressed their park need, was they satisfied the park by allocating land within their development. The difference with Robert's ranch is that they, the developer at that time said, we are going to go above and beyond. We are going to provide a public benefit. They provided those stroller parks and then five stroller parks within their development. They did not get credit for those. Those are parks that are less than the minimum neighborhood park size of six acres. That was at a benefit to the community and it was part of their public benefit that they advertised to city council. So the, the idea is, is that we are being consistent with existing policies, which is we don't provide credit for parks that don't meet our general plan policies and that do not comply with our Parks and Recreation Master Plan.
Got it.
So Albert, you don't object to?
Commissioner.
A pocket alternative of deleting the pocket park and just adding more housing?
The way that the project is going to satisfy its obligation for park land is by paying park development impact fees.
So either way, they have to pay the fees?
Correct.
Okay. Is there any other commissioner comments or questions? Commissioner Dingman, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Okay, so my disposition on this is I stated a little bit. There's a lot that went into park fees and CFDs that is years in the making. Me, myself, I, I, I'm in, follow staff's recommendation with what the input they put in. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to put on that or any other thing that they'd like to bring up? Commissioner Beaumont?
I guess what I'd recommend is that we approve this as brought forth to us with the disagreements, the two disagreements. And in the meantime, before it's given to the city council, staff can come up with more explanation for the CDF fees and the park fees so that city council has more information than we do to make the decision. That would be my recommendation.
Anybody else have any comments on that? Vice Chair Wolkerson.
Can you hold the map of the, of the area, please, Noah? Let's, let's find another one that has the potential of what the area is going to look like in terms of density and where the other parks would be. I'm just trying to get a sense of where the other parks potentially going to be in the area and how far of a distance are they? Thank you. So we're talking about the, the blue circle. And the closest park would be potentially on the other side of Old Alamo Creek. Is that correct? Down at the bottom left?
That's correct.
And then straight, straight up across where this, it says Carroll Way, there'd be another park right there as well?
Yeah, so the, the two smaller parks rectangles, those are the future private pocket parks that would be developed as part of the farm.
Okay, and so how many streets away, you know, is where this site is to where those parks are going to be? There's Carroll Way and then there's how many other, are there any other major thoroughfares between Carroll, Carroll Way and then Hawkins? But how many, you got like what, two or three other streets in there or how many? Yes.
Three blocks.
Three blocks?
Three blocks. And so not that this is the Parks and Rec meeting, but don't we, there's, there is a code that a, a community park and a neighborhood park are supposed to be a certain amount of distance away. Is that correct? And does that fit? And then we're saying, no, it doesn't fit. And so we're trying to change and giving the allowance. Do you follow me?
This project will be served by the community park that is going to be built within the farm at Alamo Creek.
And so in the current agreement, if the developer chooses not to develop a park, then that's, that's their, that's their choice, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I'm, I'm good.
Thank you, Vice Chair Wolkerson. And so now I'll ask, did anybody have, did anybody like to make a motion or any further questions? Commissioner Beaumont?
I'll make the motion by simple motion, recommend the city council approve the project.
So I have a motion by Commissioner Beaumont and a second by Vice Chair Wolkerson. Could I please have a roll call?
Commissioner Wolkerson?
Yes.
Commissioner Banta? Commissioner Beaumont? Commissioner Dingman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wolkerson?
Yes.
Chair Lightfoot?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to move on now to item number eight. We're going to move on now to item number eight. This is business items. We'll proceed with the director's report. So whenever you're free, Director Morris.
And thank you, Chair Lightfoot. We are getting our presentation up as we speak over there. As the staff table turns over for a moment. Thank you very much, Paimon. So this is our director's report for the month of July. Let's go to the next slide. So at city council last month, on July 22nd, I presented the Development Review Process Improvements Initiative. And this is the action plan for once and for all improving our development review process for the benefit of expediency and efficiency. So if you're interested in that item, you're welcome to watch the presentation. We also have a project information page that will provide updates on the implementation of the action plan on a minimum a quarterly basis. On July 22nd, the council also introduced an ordinance to update the city's development impact fee ordinance. This is not the fees themselves. This is the methodology for applying the fees. Probably the most notable thing is that the new ordinance has a section that allows the council to by resolution implement feet of rural programs, few reduction programs and any other tools that the council feels is necessary to incentivize the types of development that are desirable to Vacaville. On to the next slide. We actually have a lot of future planning commission items, so please count on attending planning commission meetings for the rest of the year. We're hoping to serve you something every month. Soon we have the Dog Stop Zoning Text Amendment and Conditional Use Permit that will be coming here for public hearing and recommendation to the council. We are working on scheduling a battery energy storage system study session for the city's ordinance. It needs to be adopted before May, March, March, April, May of next year. And then we have a myriad of other projects, some of which will touch on the advanced planning report that are in our queue and that are coming. Let's go to the next slide. Our building division continues to be busy, maybe not quite as busy this month in terms of fees collected, but in terms of permit activity. I think I've said this every meeting. I mean, in 2024, we had unprecedented amounts of residential building permits issued in final. And in over two months this summer, we had the highest levels of issuance and finals we've had in years. So it's been very busy and in a positive way. So let's continue on to the next slide. This shows overall building permits since last July. And again, we're trending very solidly and it's still looking solid through the month of August as well, of course.
Does the building permits include the ADUs that are being?
Includes everything. It includes ADUs, includes actually non-residential. This is anything that comes in, water heaters. And for the whole year though, every month, it's tallying up all those building permits that, that were reviewed.
Got you. Thank you.
Of course. And then let's go to the next slide. We continue to be very busy in building inspection as well. You see that in June, there was this massive spike. And only in October of 24 did we do more building inspections. So, and a lot of this was with our in-house staff. You can continue, Paimon. Thank you. Solar permitting continues to trend along with other building permit activity, residential building permit activity. So we're still getting building, building permits for solar. And a lot of those are automated, approved on the spot through our AI solar permit review system. Let's go on to the next slide. Paimon will take this slide and then, then the ones that follow.
Thank you. Good evening, commission. So for current planning activity, actually this should be independence at Vacavalle, not independence in Vacaville. This is a 242 four rent unit project on Allison and Vacavalle. So that's, that project was submitted. We had a new project submitted also for the farm at Alamo Creek to modify the development agreement and the specific plan. And then also Vacaville Auto Exchange off of Callan. District three, we received a minor application for perimeter fence. More importantly, we approved the Leesburg Brewery Company off of Peabody, which, which should be good use for the city. And then also the Vacaville Boys and Girls Club at their new location on Peabody Road as well. No new activity for districts four and five. And for district six, we received a, an application for a 18 unit project on Park Court. And then we also approved some modifications to the Leisure Town Self-Storage Facility. For advanced planning, just some updates. To these, these two first items, we had a study session last, last meeting. We're headed to city council on these as well to present the similar study session. And we will share the commission's thoughts and sort of hopes for those two projects. Our downtown lighting setting is also scheduled for August 26th to hopefully present the final report. Battery energy storage, battery energy storage systems ordinance, that's something that we're working on right now. And we'll have a number of study sessions and, and committee outreach with that. Pro housing designation, National Sheriff of Millard, this is a program that HCD has. Cities that are given pro housing designation are sort of get preferential treatment, I guess, for, if you will, for funding grants, things like that for housing. There are certain qualities and characteristics jurisdictions have to have. We feel we have those. Sort of a checklist and point system. One of the first steps to do, so we took this to council. Council seemed interested in the idea. After that, the next step would be to reach out to the public, which we're doing. And then we would schedule that for, and we need a council ordinance, you know, supporting the pro housing designation before we can complete our application to HCD. So that's also in the works. Our annual code update, typically you would see this a little sooner, but once we got rolling, there are just more things that we want to clean up. And we talked to other departments. They'd like to see certain things in the code, code update as well. I think we're going to just, we've stopped that now and try and put all that information together. We need to go to airport landings commission to run it by them. And then we'll be coming back to, to planning commission, then on the city council. We talked about the municipal services review. That's ongoing as well and as well as the city CFD policy update. So those are all the advanced planning projects that we have going right now. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Vice Chair Wolkerson?
I didn't. Is there an update coming to us in any time in the near future in the Northeast growth area or study session?
I think the short, yes, there is something, yeah, we are working on. That project is also underway. I don't know if I have a specific date for, we had an outreach, I don't know, two weeks ago, I think. So that was our first one. So we're just working on, just continue to work on that. But that was, I don't know if there's anything else that's been scheduled right now.
I will take us through the final pieces unless there's other questions?
I think you're good to go. Thank you.
Okay. I just wanted to touch on another topic, which is the development impact fee update. Not on the agenda, but it's another topic of interest. Currently, the plan is to take the third council study session of sorts on September 23rd. Currently, the plan is to take the third council study session of sorts on September 23rd, and that is when staff will be presenting the evolution of the development impact fee maximum amount available and a lot of policy and project options. So that is coming to council, and the goal is to get that back to council for final action, maybe in October, if we get clear policy direction in September. So that's important because it really affects our development projects across the city. And then staffing updates, unfortunately, we're losing another assistant planner, one of our newer long-range planners. It's, good help is hard to find, and then it's also sometimes hard to keep good help. So we are in recruitment mode to replenish our assistant planner ranks. So I think that's my only staffing update this time. And I think that concludes my presentation. Thank you all.
Thank you very much, Director Morris. So now we'll move on to commissioner comments. Commissioner Beaumont?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank Tom Philippi for 40-plus years of working for the city and improving the city overall, more than anybody probably knows how much he touched in this city for development and just making it a better city. So, thank you, Tom.
Commissioner Banta?
I just wanted to thank staff for the two presentations tonight. I enjoyed that they were both very different projects. One was medium density, one was estate density, and I think it's really important. I know I advocate a lot for low income, but I think it's nice to have, we have to have a healthy range of housing, and I think that it was really nice to see that this evening. So I appreciate that.
Commissioner Parks, you have any?
Yes, thank you very much for the presentation, time and effort. My apologies for being late. I had to coach my son's basketball game, then get him to soccer practice, that's all I'm showing.
Did they win?
They did not.
No.
It was a tough game. But nonetheless, it was fun. My apologies for being late.
Vice Chair Wolkerson?
Yes, I want to thank staff for the two presentations tonight. Also want to echo the words of Commissioner Beaumont regarding Tom Philippi and his 40-plus years of service in the city of Vacaville. We're all passionate about housing in different ways, but I just appreciate all of his work. Recently, I traveled to Chicago for National Association of Realtor Conference, and what we're seeing in Vacaville isn't particular to us. This is a nationwide issue, there's a unit shortage, there's affordability problem. And so it's going to continue to play out, and we're just going to have to be stewards here. Also, a key component of all of that that we're also seeing is infrastructure. And I remember being a kid in a new community my parents lived into, houses were, streets were already built out. And so just wondering, you know, when we'll see that again, because right now it's barely piecemealed on the streets, but sometimes I remember seeing developments being built, house not necessarily on it, but the streets were already there. And so I also specifically want to thank Chair Lightfoot for his words last meeting about the new arrival for my family. So I apologize for missing the meeting last week, but yeah, we, and so I hope there's one meeting that Commissioner Dingman and I will attend at the same time. So, thank you.
Commissioner Dingman, do you have any comments?
Yeah, thanks. And in advance, I'll just apologize for not being in person. I'm in San Antonio. I appreciate staff's extra effort and work to make sure that I can remote in and be a part. I also want to just thank the staff for the two great presentations and Director Morris for her update as well. Echo everybody's comments on Tom Philippi, you know, thanks, Tom, for your 40 years and what you've done for Vacaville. The reason why my family and I moved back, you know, seven years ago, because we love Vacaville, we want to see it continue to thrive. And it's exciting to see two developments that are going to meet different needs to add. Commissioner Banta's comments, I mean, two different types of developments, but we got to do this together. They're not always going to be perfect, but we are all trying to do the right thing to make sure that Vacaville continues to thrive, grow, and do it responsibly. So again, my apologies for not being there, but appreciate the support so I could do this remotely. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Dingman. So I want to thank everybody up here. I mean, we, I like the continuity we have, the different views of opinions and perspectives, I think is really important in what it is that we do. Having a varied output or outlook benefits the city, brings it up more discussion. I think that's all very important. I think everybody did a very good job this evening, and I'm proud to be part of this team. You guys are awesome. So with that, I will end tonight's meeting. Good night, Vacaville.
Yeah, it was a tough game.